It's getting better, the three times.
How are you, sir?
I'm fine.
Before we start, number twelve.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're getting grants from FEMA to do all of this work.
They have said that these four grants are viable. Okay, that these are things that they want to look at and make sure that they meet their standards.
Okay.
And so basically, it's a grant to do the study to make sure they're viable. And if they are viable, then they will turn into a project.
Oh, okay.
Am I right with that? You're correct.
Okay, and what's the dollar amount of?
About a million dollars.
A piece? Oh, wow. And that, so they're giving us, granting us four million dollars to do studies on those four different projects?
It'll be probably next year. What they did is they let us know that FEMA accepted.
That's congratulations. That's huge. That's huge, okay, thank you.
Bring in practice.
Okay.
The general manager lets the board know we've got a grant, but let the board make a decision now. Is somebody on?
Yes, it is.
Close note. We call to order the regular meeting of Transy Bay Conservation District. Today is Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty-four, nine a.m. We'll start with the invocation of pledge allegiance.
I thought, good Lord, now I will be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we as part of this confession, would deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, in thy God, one and indivisible. Honored with justice flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
There's no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move to item four. Approve the minutes of public hearing and the regular meeting held September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
No, second.
I've got a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item five, approve financial reports for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, sir, the general fund is forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. The expenditure was seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, twelve dollars and eight cents. We're a hundred percent into the fiscal year, and we expended one eighty point seven-three percent. We've got balance of seven million, four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Which again, the reason why it was so low is I had to move a million and a half for the bridges and to end of that budget. So this year's budget will be a little bit straighter. Either way, we're still on the budget. The water revenues were six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents. The expenditures were eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. We're at a hundred percent of the fiscal year, and we expended one hundred point four-four percent of the budget. But actually, we brought in one hundred point four-eight percent as far as revenue went. So we beat our budget by about three tenths. So again, the fund balances were seven million, four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Make a motion to approve financial reports for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item six, approve tax report for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Chambers County, we received thirty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and six cents with a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine-seven percent. September of this time last year, we received forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents with a collection rate of ninety-nine point nine-two. They will continue collecting throughout the year for people that are delinquent until they either sell the property or whatever. It takes quite a bit of time to go that far, but now they're going to start getting a penalty for not paying their taxes. Jefferson County, we received no money with a collection rate of ninety-five point five-one. Last year at this time, we got fifteen dollars and seven cents with a collection rate of ninety-six point three.
Make a motion to approve tax reports for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
The motion carries. Item seven, review and consider approval of accounts payable.
The monthly accounts payable for September, we received three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. The accounts payable were one million, nine, nine, ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. Also, this month, I added our construction fund on there. This is where the money that we were extra that we charged, I'm putting it into a construction fund. And this is where we take that money to do repairs. We told the public that we were gonna, when we raised the rate, we were gonna use this money to do repairs. So I added this utility construction fund on there, and we, so we spent a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. And that was designed to twenty inch water line coming across I ten and other things. But I wanted to be open and transparent, let you know that this is what the money that we put this in there for, it's been huge for us.
Make a motion to approve, accounts payable.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item eight, discuss and take action on twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five holiday schedule.
Yes, sir, we tried to make them around the middle to the first of the month. Kenny likes it that way, see where she can meet it. So these are all Wednesday, January fifteenth, February twelfth, March twelfth, April ninth, May fourteenth, June eighteenth, July ninth, August thirteenth, September tenth, October the eighth, and November twelfth, and December the tenth.
I do have extra help, but sometimes warrant and we all are overlapping, so I try to. Thank you all.
I make a motion to approve the board meeting with twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Discuss and take action on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five holiday schedule.
And so this is the same holidays that we had last year. We have Monday for January twentieth, Martin Luther King Day, February seventeenth is President's Day, May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, June nineteenth is Juneteenth, July third is Independence Day, September the first is Labor Day, November the eleventh is Veterans Day, November twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh is Thanksgiving, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is Christmas. And everyone has a two, two days of floating holiday for any other religious purposes or whatever. You get two floating holidays.
Make a motion to approve the holiday schedule.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item ten, consider possible action renewing a one-year contract for the emergency notification system with regroup mass notification.
Yes, sir, as of right now, we have two hundred and ninety-five people that have signed up. We put it on our website, we put it in the paper, we tried to advertise it through the county every way we can. But as of right now, we have two hundred and ninety-five people signed up, and it costs us four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars a year. So it's just whether or not the board thinks we're getting our money's worth out of it.
Oh, the two ninety, let's see, who do we have left? I mean, a thousand or?
Altogether, we have almost six thousand accounts. So we've got two ninety-five of around six thousand accounts.
How long have they been using this?
One year. We said we would try it for a year and see how it worked. I give, some people say they haven't got any, which is unless we're working in your area, except for me, I get every one of them, so.
I do them.
But so.
It's all with the text and.
Text.
Fifteen seconds later in the phone call.
Yes. So it's just whether the board and y'all feel like it's worth.
Is there a way to tell how many new people have signed up other than the initial cases out here, so all those people signed up? You know, like, can we tell, is there anybody signed up in the last sixty days? Any way to identify that?
I imagine that Diane probably could do that.
I was just asking the question for the fact that, okay, maybe we go for another year and, you know, if we don't turn around more than that amount another year, then, okay, yeah, we don't.
I think it's.
Is that the initial people that signed up and then?
When people are signing up for new service or turning on existing meter or whatever, do we try to encourage them to sign up at that time?
Is there a way they can automatically sign up?
Well, I don't know that you could force them to, but you could at least ask them and encourage them to do it right then.
On our website, and like I said, we put it in the papers and ran it one time, trying to get everybody to sign up.
I know we've tried, but.
It's also in the front windows when they come in to pay their bills.
Right.
And I think we put it in the mass media one time, we put it in the watermill one time, which is a couple thousand dollars.
We might consider a one-time discount to get them to sign up, five or ten dollars. I mean, it's something. They might, they might do it.
Victor, may I say something?
Absolutely.
You know, lots like that, or like, see, we've already signed up and everything. But when it goes on Facebook, it is shared, it is shared, it is shared. So it reaches thousands, thousands of people.
Even though they're not signed up to us, they're getting it through you guys.
Social media, exactly. So.
I'm kind of with Les, I think we need to do it one more year and do what we can to encourage people to sign up, whatever.
Well, if we don't, like I said, if we don't get at least the same amount this year, then, yeah.
We need to, I mean.
It didn't do what we wanted to do.
We're three hundred, we need to at least be a thousand, that would only be twenty percent of our customers.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I know that Susan brought up.
We need to sign up for new services, did that for new sign up? I don't know, I'm gonna go ask, I won't say there isn't, but we need to verify this here, so I may be able to get it off something.
And Susan brought up one time that state representative was getting phone calls about water issues, and she wanted to see if we would do something, and we did something. But two hundred and ninety people signed up, thousands. I agree with Les, and you know, social media thing, there's no guarantee there. And, you know, we're still not gonna call the state representative's office.
Yeah.
But I agree with Les, but we need to encourage the customers to sign up.
We just did another mayor in the watermill, maybe once a quarter or something?
Yeah, because otherwise, I don't, I don't see how we can, we can do this for two hundred and ninety people. At that cost.
Yeah. Okay.
Another thing is maybe Yonkers Parker with, with the Chambers mornings, you know, with the Chambers County Office of Emergency Management, they have kind of same thing, and nobody pay me back whoever signs up for that, that can sign up for this as well.
Good idea.
Yeah, I'm sure, we can talk to the county about that as well.
How's the calls been more targeted recently? Because yesterday I got a post late in the afternoon evening about the bowl water notice.
Yes.
But I didn't receive a phone call, which it wasn't my affected area, so I wondered, maybe the calls are more targeted. I've had a big annoying text or phone call, been wanting to know it all. But I did think that, oh, maybe the system has been replying to you because it wasn't affecting my address, but I didn't receive the notice.
There was twenty-seven people in that zone that we, we sent it out. So we target, yes, but if it's.
And I did get the call because I was infected.
But then again, social media, I've had that twice, so that people have shared it. So I've seen that online, first on Facebook, big circle time.
Yeah, yeah.
Has it been rescinded yet? To shed curiosity, not convinced of it. Because we were gonna post it this morning, and we'll try to jump through the groups and try to do that on Facebook. Yeah. But like I said, the targeted phone call and or text is a lot better than not knowing at all, but only two hundred and ninety-one customers. I don't want to get it, I mean, I know newspapers carrying it, has Anawak newspaper carried it?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a lot of people read newspapers everywhere. Maybe on bills, the statements.
We put it in the bills one time, and it's on our website, keep our people to sign up.
But then again, and thank you for allowing us this dialogue.
No problem.
It's that all it takes is for one person to receive the notice to send it out. So for every person of the two ninety-five that signed up, you're looking at a hundred, a thousand people that are seeing it. And I think it would be a huge disturbance if it's an emergency and no one's replying.
Right.
So, you know, that's the other side. And, you know, with everything that's going on with these weird hurricanes and weather, I think that if only two hundred and ninety-five people are signing up for that, that's two hundred and ninety-five people who know what's going on and will share the news instead of having no one receive the notification system. You call your neighbor, hey, did you hear your board notice? That happens. Everybody's texting, hey, I don't know.
It says on here, contact count or contact contract count, sixty-five hundred. Is this price based off sixty-five minutes? So let's say next year we go and we get to fifteen hundred, can we lower it to say three thousand or five hundred? I can't remember that part back, but we'll look into it. I'd just say they run it for another year, and then we can reevaluate, if we have to, we can lower the price a little more. Then we start easing towards that, the contact account amount, then we raise it again a little bit.
Yeah, I agree with that, otherwise we just have to look at, if this social media thing works, and maybe that's the way we need to go, and look at how we communicate. Somebody can get something on social media that has group that follows it, that can do it, that we can save this money, or at least reduce the amount that we're paying out.
Well, I make a motion to extend for another year contract for emergency notification system with regroup mass notification.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item eleven, consider possible action declaring the following equipment to be surplus property to be sold at auction.
Yes, sir, we have one ton, and two pickup trucks. There's a picture of first pickup truck, picture of the second pickup truck, and a picture of one ton. We replaced, I bought one truck in last year's budget, and the next slide or so, let you know that we bought another truck for drainage in this year's budget. But we haven't bought a one-ton yet. The one-ton is, we're waiting for buy board or HGC. The pickup trucks are forty thousand, but the, one-ton's over about seventy thousand. So that gets us over the threshold to have a formal bid, so we were waiting on the Dodge place down there to get on buy board. That way we can do it legally.
And we don't need these as extras or?
No, these are replacements.
Okay.
Wood keeps making trucks on hand, but.
Okay, that's, that was some words, that was some words.
But they're very, all very high-mollaged. So we need a motion to send them to the auction, settle this property.
I make a motion that we declare the drainage surplus property as listed to be sold at auction.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item twelve, grants accepted by FEMA. One, spindle top State Highway one twenty-four, replace the bridge and improve the ditch from State Highway one twenty-four north to State Highway sixty-five. Second, spindle top State Highway sixty-five, replace the bridge and improve the ditch from State Highway sixty-five north I ten. Three, double bio drainage ditch overflow to Lake Anawak. And four, the May Hall Bio IH ten drainage project.
Yes, sir, same thing, I want to let the board know and the public that Jeff Ward, an associate, was the grant administrator on this, and they are like top of the line. So anyway, FEMA has accepted all of these, and he feels like that we should have some money starting next year to do this. Now, some of the money is to pay for the engineering on the bridge, but some of the money is to widen the ditch. So some of that money will be in there to widen ditch. We will have to acquire some small right away and go back through with the drag line, just like we did, and widen it out some more. So there's really no action to be taken, I just wanted to inform y'all, I think it's a very good thing we're starting to get some, start rolling in.
On the May Hall project, what do you think we're?
This is to look at where the boxes are underneath I ten. And what they, we've already done a study to say how much to raise the water, but they have to go back. Also, I'm going to say that we're gonna, it's gonna take ten million dollars to do the job to mitigate that one-ten. He's gonna go back and look to say that it is a viable project, and we're not spending ten million dollars to save two homes.
Well, not only that, at this, when they're done with this study, we should have something in hand that says, this is what it's gonna take.
Yes.
To do this.
Right.
Because right now, last time we done it, all we got was saying, no, you can't do it because it's gonna raise.
And I think if you're looking at it the right way, that if we would put in for a grant to do something there without a study, they, they're like, you know.
Yeah.
They need the study for you to get the grant, so. So this is what we're doing. And while we're on grants, the brick lining behind us, starting off by your house at Chestnut over here, is still, we had to do a full blown permit through the core to be able to extend those, extend that blocks down. And I asked him at the same time, how much would it cost to go ahead and extend it all the way to, say, Campbell? That so we don't have to go back again later in the, but it ended up, it was gonna cost seventy-eight thousand dollars to, just to do the permitting.
Do the permitting.
And where they, they was to do fifteen on the project to begin with, it's ended up being like forty.
So will it, it goes to LeBlanc right now?
It goes to Chestnut.
Goes to Chestnut, so.
And then it's all, they will be there and go towards LeBlanc. And it's not gonna, my understanding is not gonna go completely to LeBlanc. That you're looking at about a thousand dollars a foot, and it's just not enough money there to go that far.
We'll look at it internally and see what it would cost us to go from where it's gonna stop all the way to Campbell.
This is one of the reasons why I told him, though, that we haven't put in for the grants or anything. So there's nothing in the pipeline even started to be able to say, hey, it's worth doing the seventy-eight thousand dollars now. So we'll just have to do it in the next, next time.
Next time, okay.
Because nothing's in the pipeline for it.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll move on to item thirteen, consider possible action approving thirteen hundred and seventy tons of crushed limestone to repair the Winnie Wetland roads.
Yes, sir, the Wetland roads are getting very bad. You come in the front gate and you have to go up to the junction box with the Jell-O when they come in, and we need to install it. And then you go around at the back and you have to take samples at the lagoon and a few places and so on and so forth. So as you go through there, nothing's been done with the road in ten years, it's beat out, muddy, and these have, these samples are taken every day. The grain is shy, and they're taken every day, be turned in. So this was on Mike's list also, of things that he needed done. So, anyway, so we want to repair the, the county said that if we bought the material, that they would bring their motor grader in and lay it down for us and receive it.
So this is, not only do we have to get back in there and do it, but it's also a safety issue for our employees, our equipment going in there, so.
Yes, sir, they're pretty bad shape right now.
What's the dollar amount, you know?
Eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for the rock.
Okay. And we'll take this out of our construction fund?
I don't know that it's necessarily that we have to take it out of there, but it's possible.
We can, okay, either way.
We're, you'll know by the next slide or something.
Okay, very good.
I make a motion we approve the thirteen hundred and seventy tons of crushed limestone to repair the Winnie Wetland roads.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider possible action canceling having Seabreeze Culvert manufacture a new bar screen collection box for the Winnie Stole sewer.
Yes, sir, this is just housekeeping. We, in the beginning, we were gonna do the. We, in the beginning, we were gonna do the, get them to replace the aluminum box. And we ended up buying a concrete, having a concrete box made for the durability and life. And so I'm just doing some housekeeping and showing the people that are here after us that we did say we're gonna buy it. And now we're saying that, that we didn't buy it. So it's in the record that we did buy it.
Make a motion to cancel having Seabreeze Culver manufacture new bar screen collection box for Winnie Stole sewer.
Second.
A motion of a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider possible action advertising for bids to install a twenty inch H D P E water transmission line from the Winnie Water Plant across I ten, twenty two hundred feet, I guess that is.
Yes, sir.
With two directional boxes.
Four boards.
I'm sorry, two directional boards.
Yes, sir. The plans are complete and everything, and we've already got the permits and everything. So we need, it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars, so it's gonna have to go out for bid. So to, and also to make sure that we got the right A S T M and all these other things, I'm gonna have the engineer go ahead and bid it for us. And if it comes out decently, we might get the guy to do the bore to do H D P E all the way into the plant. Because he's gonna be doing three hundred and something feet across I ten and then down to the, to the plant. And then he's got a bore under the road again. So we were looking at possibly doing H D P the whole way. So I'm gonna let L J A advertise for this and go out for bids, just to make sure it's under an engineer's stamp and it's done right.
If you don't do H D P E, what do you do?
Well, you would transition to P B C or you could go double iron or whatever. Normally you would go to a P B C. You just transition couple, couple and go to.
This is gonna cost a little more, but be a lot better?
Well, I mean, they're there already and I wanna say the H D P is a little bit cheaper pipe.
Yeah, it's a little bit cheaper, it's longer joints. I mean, it just, it go in a lot quicker if you go, you're gonna have to use H D P going to freeway and or any of your boards. And you have a transition to go to C nine hundred or whatever decide to use. If it was cheap enough, that could go H D P all the way, I think it'd go a lot faster, a lot smoother.
And you get a better product because whenever you get through with H D P, they call it a Harvey to where it's, it's got a end made on it. So whenever you put it into the coupling and tighten it down, you don't have to put a five foot concrete kicker behind it. Because it's, it's got a flange to weld it on to the pipe. And then when you tighten it on there, you don't, you don't have to have a big kicker behind it. So it's, it has several advantages. And we have an ape right there going beside it, so I don't see any reason to tap it in the future or anything. So it's pretty much a transmission line. You can tap it with a electrofusion, uh, uh, put electrofusion on there and make a tap line, you can. If you absolutely had to. We're gonna cross the freeway and put a T there, that way we go east. And I had somebody come in last week and they were looking at possibly doing six hundred houses just past Nutty Jerry's on Highway seventy three. And they was, they would be willing to help us run it down that way if need be. But I, the heck of it is, all of these contractors that are around here, the plans are done. All they're waiting for is the right interest rate or whatever to fill up and they're gonna start hooking these suckers out there. Anyway, that's the plans behind it.
I make a motion, we go ahead and put the advertising for bids to install the twenty inch H D P E water transmission line from the Winnie Water Plant across I ten, twenty two hundred feet with two directional boards.
Second.
I have a motion of a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider possible action approving for a one hundred by one hundred concrete slab in the rear of the Stole office for parking and storage.
Yes, sir. As you can see in this picture, we wanted to come off the back of the slab that's there already and give it some lay down yard, get the stuff out of the dirt. And aren't you gonna use some of this for parking also?
Yes, it, it, make it easier for us when we move up that P B C and stuff we've got on the side of the apartment that's existing and put it in the back, get it out of all those guys that park up there. Right now, people's car are kinda getting in the way of the equipment and we don't want accidents right there.
So you're, you're going out towards the back. I guess I see where you, where you come right around here. So you're going out to the backside.
Yes, sir.
You know what the pricing would be for?
I put, I showed that it was about thirty thousand dollars for the concrete.
I would guess it's gonna be in the.
We can do it ourselves or?
Uh, we were gonna try to see if we could get somebody to do it.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna be around six, sixty thousand, just guessing.
Yeah.
But give or take.
That's roughly about sixty, six hundred bucks a yard. It's expensive, a hundred forty five a yard, I think.
Yeah, for the concrete.
I make a motion to approve four and a hundred by hundred concrete slab at the rear of the Stole office for parking and storage.
All in second.
Have a motion of a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item seventeen, purchase half ton pickup and drainage, received three bids from, and Winnie Dodge was the low bid.
Yes, sir. I explained to y'all ago that the pickup trucks were like forty thousand dollars. So we were able to just go get three bids from three dealers. Yeah, and that's, that's the truck that we purchased.
Winnie Dodge has been the low bid by three, four thousand dollars on these half ton trucks. And the last Chevrolet, we normally buy from Ford and young Silvy. The last truck we bought there was Chevrolet, I think it's like ninety five and they're around seventy three up here. So we're waiting to get, finish our by board stuff too, so we continue to buy bigger trucks on.
Good. All right, we have drainage report.
Okay.
Amy says been set in for him. He's tied up for the bridge group. On the map one, Rush Ditch south of Interstate ten. And the drag line is what we're doing there is just clean, re slope in the ditch and using the Camatsu to recut the shell. On map two. That would be, um. Right, that's, I think on the last meeting, y'all approved an easement through Eddie Ferguson. We're continuing into the Hamilton property. That's pretty much the mine ground there. That's where we have a long ridge and a V con working there. On that drainage. Where.
This is the bridge, the steel bridge that was there.
Okay, that's the bridge that's going McDaniel's?
McDaniel's, yes. Y'all approved building a bridge for him and we've received the bridge and we'll just put it on the ground right now till we get ready to install it. But he, he paid for the bridge himself and we gave him, we just sent him a bill or an invoice for the nails and the boards and everything else to say we were gonna need to. And it's gonna have a concrete deck on it with this guy with the guard rail. So we just sent him an invoice for all of that stuff to be able to put it together. Right now, he's building the bridge, y'all know.
They're on Spittletop property right now and they're approximately fifty percent completion on that bridge.
On Winnie Ditch. We're gonna bring up existing bridge on Winnie Ditch. Spittletop on.
These are the boxes underneath the freeway.
Okay, that's right there at Rush. We, there was quite a bit of sediment, there was close to four foot of sediment in those boxes, plus the debris that we had to get out. Which, that was from spraying, from aerial spraying, which we did, that was gonna happen. Hopefully it won't be that bad, but that, we hit, or we did that for our text on. Okay, well, Florida's sixteen sixty three, that's, we've got a long ridge working there. Down between the Boward and West property and that's a lead off of Spittletop and he will jump across south and keep coming down.
In this, we got us?
Uh, no, sir, next whole water. Boward and the West property is on the west side. That ties in to the Spittletop. It's, it's west of.
There's just some washouts, we need to go back in there and get the clay and fill in.
Rush Ditch?
Okay, on the, on Rush, we, we'd set a new pipe or a train car there. And we're waiting on, we're having some trouble with that machine's hydraulic pump. But that truck, that machine will go north all the way to sixty sixty three and then come back down from the east side. That's north of ten on, on the Rush Ditch. That's the bridge that we talked about on the Spittletop property. They're, they're, they're making really good headway. The weather's been good, it's been awful dry, but that's, that helps a lot when you're going dirt.
We didn't pull the old pilot, we just went in, drove a new pilot next to the old pilot and built a bridge on top of it, saw work the bridge. That's for John Rainey.
Yeah, John Rainey's the tenant on that property.
The tenant and the landlord split the cost of the bridge, paid for the bridge to fill in, supplied the pile of boards.
Then we have some, what do you, you wanna do that footage? We had, we had hired Ronnie Brown yesterday, day before yesterday, to come and fly the Spittletop from Intercoastal all the way north. So the board and the public could get a better type of view of what, what a river looks like. And some of the improvements and the effects of what their aerial spray program has helped do, which that, that's not gonna be an overnight thing. That's gonna, I mean, it took eighty six, about fifteen years to.
This is the Intercoastal and this is where we go in the Spittletop. This is the very over here.
That ditch is bigger than what most people think and it's pretty long.
Most of this is salt water, so that's why it's facing down. It's rapids and water coming out of the bay. So that keeps the vegetation from growing in it.
I think it's about seven or eight miles to the weir from the Intercoastal.
Trinity Bay in nineteen fifty six paid eighteen and a half million dollars, sold bonds and dug this ditch from the Intercoastal all the way into Winnie to really play. So they actually, they actually paid for it. Studied with drag lines and dump trucks.
Is there an easement on both sides of this or is it just private property on both sides?
I think they bought the, the right ways through there as they came through. I don't know exactly how wide it is without researching it, how much right away we have. Actually, it's a pretty good sized ditch all the way to. But if you look at this map over here where it goes out into Jefferson County, the reason why is because that ditch belonged to us, cause we paid for it. So that's how we divvied it up between us and Drainage District six.
On the left, those are one mile square impoundments and they were put there to, where they could pump fresh water. When they had fresh water in the bow, they could pump it and hold it and use it for rice farming. Obviously, they don't do that anymore.
We're coming up down the weir.
Pipkin Steel does.
Do they?
They use fresh water out of there.
I think there's, there's three permits of the core of town. One in the Relent, one in the, one, two, one with Donnie and one with Grayson Fletcher. Here's the salt water barrier.
Trinity Bay, put that back in also. Since it's fresh water, you can see you got some trees on it on this end.
Well, Donnie sprayed everything on the east side, that's what they call the Roberts pasture. And you can kinda see where we started up here in this first ledge that turns west. And basically what we did, we just sprayed the slopes, the sides. Just to pretty much knock the vegetation back, not necessarily to kill it, just to control it, suppress it.
How, how deep is that?
Not really, it's not really, maybe eight feet.
That's the Pippin Bridge we just moved across, that's an obstruction that really needs to come out. Nobody uses that bridge anymore. That's.
If we increase our flow with the two new bridges and, and what we're doing on Spittletop on the north side of one twenty forty, we think we have enough.
I think it is, it will Victor, because once you get down there, it's all flat. So nothing else, it's gonna sheet, sheet flow across the marsh out there pretty much.
No, no need to widen it or anything in the future.
They threw it off upside down, I don't know. Same one.
I think this side one, yeah. I think this side, yeah. That's Architube, uh, you don't skip that.
Okay.
That's the bay hall of Architube ten, uh, on the...
That's our water river to the north. And here it's crystal.
Yeah.
Cut to Grays.
Yeah, he was going up north, okay. Okay, this, he's going down Franklin Road and towards Airport, and then, uh, sure to get a turn south on Spilltop.
Which is right here, right?
That's, uh, that's going from Interstate ten south on Rush.
So you have Oden, you have Spilltop, and you have Rush, and we cleaned the other two, so this contributary right here, we're cleaning right now. So all of the contributaries going into Spilltop cleaned.
Unless they finish this side, they're gonna get on, jump across on Rush. We just sprayed all this about two weeks ago, a lot of vegetation just now turning, just been so dry, but, uh, it just hadn't given plan really a time to work.
Should we, at this point, maybe edit some of this and send it to text dot, uh?
Yes, I'm, I'm, this is very, uh, challenging.
There's two hours of film there.
Yeah, I know, that, that, that's why you're gonna have to condense it for them a little bit. But that, with, and with the information that, that we've, uh, we're, we're working on the grants for those two bridges, uh, maybe, I know they're not gonna do it right away, but at least get them to thinking about, uh...
I mentioned it to you the last time we had lunch, a couple of weeks ago, and I told them that we were, we were beat through. Plus, they helped us clean the blocks on it.
Right.
So they knew, and I told them that I would, I would get a letter from, uh, from the engineer if need be, that the ditch had been cleaned and it has the capacity to, to, for they could put the blocks on it freely.
Good.
This is down south of Fairview on Orchestra Five, and, uh, that's pretty, it's another project.
It all looks good. Uh, did, while you were doing this, did y'all identify anything that needed to be done, that you really didn't know needed to be done?
Uh, well, we replaced that bridge on the red ditch, and we've replaced several pipes going in there that was washed out or whatever, so we repaired everything along the way, and we had actually put a railcar in, um, Oden.
Yes, sir.
Uh, because it was completely washed away, so you couldn't get around it to get over there, so.
Good.
We worked with the landowner and got another pipe put in there, so.
That's Orchestra Five.
So anyway, I edited this, and, uh, so just wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like.
Looks good.
Okay, more details.
Yes, we got a deal on the ground storage tank project at, uh, West Marching Plant. Uh, Palmer and Manning is third and complete in design. Uh, Palmer is also requested sixty digs, and the T C Q is pretty planned.
Yes, I met, uh, I was, I had a, uh, team's call with, uh, the engineer and T C Q, and really and truly, they were more worried about the fence being put up over there than they were the ground storage tank. So, so Mike had sent a picture at once, but anyway, I sent it to her again, and she was happy as she could be that there wasn't that worry about the water tank, so, uh, like I say, we, we've had it where, where it's going, and the guy is gonna be and everything, so it's getting close. Uh, I was hoping to have a, a dollar figure by this meeting, and I, I see she called just a minute ago, so. Sorry about that, go ahead.
Uh, the crews are also completing place service line inventory. Uh, documentation will be sent to the T C Q this month. Uh, the new bar stream has been received at the Winnie, uh, sewer plant. We're looking at installation of our cell streets. The new rate increase will be on this month's water sewer bill. Uh, we've received documentation from T C Q showing that the alleged violation for, uh, today's C T has been resolved for the Winnie Water Creek Plant, and that the system makes a superior water system. We, uh, also received documentation from the T C Q showing that the alleged violation for unauthorized discharge at Rose and Vine here has been resolved. As part of our insurance requirement, we hired a contractor to perform thermal imaging on all of the electrical equipment at both plants. This was completed last week. Crews installed one rear of the sewer tab, installed four complete grinder stations, two hundred and fifty feet of sewer discharge line, installed eight water meters, relocated one grinder station, installed thirteen meters in Cypress Point, and on repairs, repaired eight sewers, thirty water meters, and responded to a hundred and sixteen grinder station callouts.
What did it cost us to, to, on average, to, to go out and service a grinder? You know, we, when we're, I know all, a lot of these were during, uh, regular hours, but are we, are we paying?
Do you have an average of what it costs for a sewer cost, for a repair, or whatever, like, three hours, or two hours, or you have an idea on the grinder?
Right, I, I would probably say on an average, we're probably looking at anywhere from, uh, two and a half to three hours.
To find the problem out, get to where you're going, and whatever kind of stuff, so. But we're working on a work management system now, to be able to spit those numbers out for us.
Gotcha.
He's installing thirteen meters, is that new meters, or is that replacing old meters?
Uh, on the thirteen notes were, uh, those were the drop-ins that right around over there for the Cypress Point subdivision.
So these are new meters?
Yes, sir.
So we're still, still moving some property?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Very good, thank y'all. Uh, is there any reason to go to executive session?
No, sir.
Everybody's good, uh, any board member reports? Everybody's happy? All right, only one other item.
Make a motion for a chairman.
Uh, second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries.